There's no one in the room?
No, I've been wondering about that today.
That's the break from the corner around.
And that's the situation.
Yep.
What's going on in the bar and wondering if it's raining?
I was just curious.
So.
It didn't today, it didn't yesterday.
So there is a big outdoor being.
We had a cold right then there was no rain.
Yeah, that's what I was. I heard the wind picking up and I thought, oh, we're fixing to get rain, then we got no rain.
There's a chance of rain.
Today's got a weather. All right.
What's that?
See the odder ends for me. You still got the weather all figured out.
Really? I guess I'm just so fired up because of my birthday.
Sure is.
My life.
I have now joined the sixty five.
Okay.
And just a young one percent.
Yeah. My daughter doesn't think so.
Those middle decade ones that are the hardest milestones, the zero ones are not that big a deal.
Yeah.
They're just, well, just see you did those, those happy white ones, it's like, I'm good.
People at first, you know, you're. All but senior socials in the first, well, good morning.
Good morning, good to have you.
Well, good morning.
Yeah, over six chickens again. Having dinner with my daughter tonight. My brother, his name Friday night. To spread this out with these.
Yeah, don't let's start.
Well, that's unknown.
I'm burning.
Thank you, sir.
I wasn't aware.
Would anyone wish to sign up to speak on?
Ramona Verden. You know, a lot of low marks.
Are you talking?
We've heard you.
Oh, sorry, here's the money.
You're the only one that's very.
You're not.
And so you do that.
You too love.
Don't you notice? Stop pushing him, Scott.
Susan, I got an email this morning from the Canton lines, but it tells me that it's how to train professionals.
Oh, yeah. Shannon's gonna be there.
But I can't figure it out, I'm sorry. I wish I could hear it. Sure, sure, we'll be good. This is for.
What the? Yes.
That's not the reason I can't be there.
Well. I'm sorry, I don't.
Yeah.
All that. They're perfect.
It's one of those baptized by fire. That's why me or ask me.
You could decorate the floor.
You want them to decorate the floor? Well, I mean, I guess I. All this is decorated. My, my always.
Or she can't.
That's nothing. Most not explode.
Do what?
You must not explode. Try not to.
Try not to.
Pretty good, you're doing all right.
Doing great.
You're going to present the gene awesome report today?
Yes. Exciting to listen.
Where are you just?
Are you?
I'm good. Burger will already in here, he's already got everything.
Yeah. I may be here, but I don't know if I'm gonna say.
Wait. You're looking at it.
Okay.
Oh.
Are you?
That's all there's no. Did you go? Perfect job.
Uh huh.
It works very well.
I need it.
There you. Am I old?
Me?
Not only.
You see it?
I am. I do. But I don't want to do that again, get my attention.
Okay. Here. Susan American.
She was. What's up? Good.
From five. Yes. Boy, quite persistent, I think she's. Maybe not.
He said he already started before she stepped down.
Oh, she's not gonna sit in with us?
Here she is.
There she is. Wait on you. We can start the meeting now.
Good.
All right, would you please rise? We've got indications going to be led by Commissioner Melton. Called by the flagist of flags.
Let's pray, Father God, we. We lift you up this morning, give you praise and honor, Father, and tell you what a wonderful God you are, Father. The King of kings and the Lord of all lords, Father. Thank you, Father, for the many blessings you give us on a daily basis, Father. Continue to bless this county, Father. Father, give this court wisdom to make the best decision possible for the. For the citizens of Van Jack County. Father, we pray that you would bless our military. Father, be with them, especially those who are in harm's way, Father, continue to bless them and be with them. Father, bless our nation, Father, we're. Such a dividing nation, Father, and only you can bring us together. Continue to lead, guide and direct us, and we'll be careful to give you the praise, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, pledge to our American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honored Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, call this meeting order at nine oh three. And we do have a forum present, all of the commissioners are here. Are there any general announcements?
Well, it's going on until Friday.
How's it turn out? Turn out?
It's, it's lower than what we expected. But I think that's all over the place, so far we, as of last night, we had two thousand six hundred and seventy nine voters.
Okay. And I'd just like to say that. I, we conducted four town hall meetings, one in each precinct in the last two weeks. And I believe we enjoyed getting, getting out and being able to talk about the county and where we're at. And I believe the commissioners did too, we got to get, talk to a lot of citizens in that regard. So we hope to do that again in the fall. All right, public, any more general announcements? Not, there is, we have. One public comment. It's Ronnie Jones, who wishes to speak on item number three, seven, ten, eleven and twelve. Mr. Jones, you have five minutes for the three minutes. So.
No. Item three, I'm just gonna read what y'all are gonna do supposedly.
Three. Item number three is public comment.
It says, beginning the meetings. It says, the last sentence. At which time, all matters pertaining to the following items will be discussed and considered. So soon y'all are gonna get to discuss it in here, so we know what we're talking about. Because right now, I don't know what I'm talking about. That was. In the beginning, public comments. And then item number seven. All of them. If I can get on the right page. What kind of forum bid are we talking about? You know, assuming that's a typo error. But I don't know. Number ten. A traffic study on Highway sixty four. I thought the state sets all of those and all y'all could do, or we can do as citizens, is recommend what they should be. So we're gonna do a study that I've never seen done before. But we're gonna do it now. Number eleven, discuss the forty five day travel reimbursement. And the. Justice of the peace in precinct four. Is not a new employee who's been here for several years. He knows what he should do. I don't know that we should extend it unless he was in the hospital. And number twelve. Agreement with trial lamb roofing or courthouse roof repairs? I've heard y'all talk about having the roof repaired. Back several months ago. So are we gonna pay twice for the same roof? Or what? I was supposed to turn that off. And I just turned it off. Sorry about that. Oh. I don't think we're up to do that advice for the reason what it pays for. You ought to be talking about insurance or talking to them without doing what they were supposed to recently put the roof on. So I have.
All right, thank you very much, Ronnie. Item number four, consent agenda. Consent agenda items to consent a routine by commissioners court will be enacted by law motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the county judge or commissioner requests. An item to be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. Is there any items that need to be discussed separately?
They don't, they don't need to be discussed separate, we'd like to make a comment on the monthly reports. If, if I'm, I'm not always. Oh, I don't know what the word would be fair. If I don't say when we get all, I always bring it to y'all's attention when we don't get reports. So we've received all reports for January, so I, I think I should say. Thank you to all the supervisors and elected officials for providing all of our January reports.
Okay. Thanks for those comments, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign, motion passes, item number. Five, discuss and consider Vincent County and gene, genealogical society annual report, I believe. Orton is here to make that presentation, thank you very much, you bet.
Morning.
Haven't seen y'all for a while, it's great to be back up here.
Good to see you.
We have all kinds of good news at the genealogy library, we're celebrating forty five years. Of our society being in existence and we're really pleased with being able to serve the county and the people who live here. But we also serve a wider range of people because we take. We take inquiries off of the internet and on our Facebook page, and we get phone calls and. People come from all over, we'd have people who come from California and Michigan and the East Coast and. And we have Texas folks who live all over the country and they're always contacting us for information, so. Our little library reaches out to a very large array of people. Want to say a heartfelt thank you to the county commissioners for allowing us to have space in the courthouse annex. We've been there since nineteen eighty eight and, and we're just very proud of our space and we're very, very grateful. That you all allow us to have a library there. And in the report, there's a list of all the people who are the volunteers in our genealogy library. We have eleven volunteer librarians. Who worked a total of four thousand two hundred and ninety six hours managing the genealogy libraries. Our parking crew worked eleven thousand ninety seven hours. Our librarians worked two thousand six hundred and forty three hours on special projects. The quarterly editors worked a hundred and ninety eight hours. This past, in twenty twenty three, we had two hundred and seventy eight out of county patrons. Nine hundred and twenty two in county patrons. Forty six out of state patrons and we. Our genealogical society provides free programs for all the folks who want to attend our workshops and our monthly meetings. We bring in speakers and, and in our workshops, everything's free, so we want the public to be able to come in and. And learn about genealogy and learn about local history. And we provide our genealogy library, the, we park cars on first Monday, y'all have allowed us to do that. For many years and we totally appreciate it. With that money, we, all that money goes back into the library and we pay for things like new computers. Software subscriptions. The copy machine, we pay the lease on that and the paper and the ink and we purchase new books. We added. A whole bunch of new books this year, almost nine hundred new books came into our collection, we have. Almost seven thousand books in the library in addition to all the microfilm and, and the other resources that we have. We were so excited to co-host the hundred and seventy fifth anniversary. Van Zant County last March and that was a big event and we sure did have a lot of fun. We've marked some war of eighteen twelve veteran graves. And in the back, I put in some pictures of just some of the things we do, we're locating the lost cemeteries and getting them. Approved by the Texas Historical Commission. Getting signage up and making sure all the landowners know that there's, there's a cemetery back there in their woods. And we managed to get a new marker. For Jose Calahorra and Chad was kind enough to install it for us and. Cause the marker that was there, the historical marker, had been stolen many years ago and we, we pray that this one doesn't get stolen again. Those things are not cheap and they're very heavy, what do they weigh, Chad, they're very heavy, aren't they?
Took a couple of men to handle.
Yeah. They're very heavy, but Jose Calahorra was here and this is hard to imagine. He came here almost three hundred years ago and. It's, it's interesting to know that there were people out here. Three hundred years ago that we can recognize and, and remember. We spent twenty thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and two cents managing the library this past year in twenty twenty three. We, we offer monthly programs at all of our meetings to. Try to help educate people and, and then there, in the back, there's some pictures, we have a picture of the county judge and. And Chad helping us out and we just want to say that we. Do appreciate y'all and we submit our report for your approval.
Thank you, Carrie, and. This, this newsletter, quarterly newsletter that you put out, how do we, and it says on there, notes, membership dues increase for twenty twenty. How do we become a member?
Well, that's the interesting thing, if you look in your book, you all were unanimously. selected as honorary members of the genealogical society and you'll be receiving that quarterly every time it comes out.
All right.
I'll be personally delivered.
Personally deliver, that's, that's the best way.
But you're all honorary members.
Thank you so much. All right, do we have a motion to accept the report from the genealogical society? All right. Motion is made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes, thank you so much for what y'all do. Y'all do incredible job for our county.
We appreciate y'all too, very much.
All right.
Wonderful day.
Thank you.
All right, item number. Number six, discuss and consider board appointments for E S D number four.
Yes, sir, we had Mr. Greg Preston resign, he was on the board over there, he resigned. And then the only application we had to replace him was Robert Tisdale, which, which we're all familiar with. Mr. Tisdale, the former constable over in precinct three. So I make a motion, we. Replace Greg Preston with Robert Tisdale. On the S D four.
All right, there's a motion made in second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes, item number seven, discuss and consider exemption. From bids on state base restaurant as established by L G C section. Two sixty two point oh two three.
Yes, and Ronnie, you're correct, that was a typo, that should be from instead of form. The, the state law requires us, and Sandy, help me out if I get out of line to, anytime we. Purchase material, the more than fifty thousand dollars was supposed to go out for bids. Well, the rock plant over in Elmo, Arcosa, they. Are not producing. Commercial based rock, which we have our bid on. And we hadn't been able to get any rock, if any of y'all tried to get rock for the last two months, it's been very limited. And so they came up with some state based rock, which is a. I, I wish we could buy a state based rock all the time, it's a lot better rock. It, it holds up a whole lot better. So some came available and, and with all this weather and freezing weather, we had the rock roads that I'm responsible for over there, it really took a toll. And so. Some came available and it's four dollars a ton more than the commercial base, we pay eighteen dollars for a commercial base, state base is twenty two dollars. Well, the deal was on that rock that I had sold on to get it out of there. So time did not let me go out for bids, but. I turn it over to Panda, the DA, and y'all see in your deal of, of the reasons that are allowable for us not to go out for bids. And so. Under this. Section. Two six two point oh two three. So I make a motion that we do not go out for bids for that and what's been done and. According to that. And. So that's my motion and that's why it's been done.
Second. Okay, motion has been made to exempt the bidding for the state based rock.
Yes, and Panda did say to make sure we were paying not more than what the state pays for it. And the state pays forty nine dollars and ninety cents a yard. A yard weighs approximately two tons, so they're paying in the neighborhood of twenty four ninety five, so we're under what the state of Texas. We're, we're paying the same thing Kaufman County pays, same thing Hunt County pays, so we're, we're, we're not. Out of line at all on what we're paying, now they have started making some more commercial based rock and so now we're back on commercial things.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign? All right, motion passed.
Second, Chad.
All right, item number eight, discuss and consider approving indigent defense attorney contract with Jonathan Manning, and this is.
Morning, Joe, can we go ahead and call eight and nine?
Yes.
They are, they were the same thing and so.
Very good.
Whatever questions we have, I'll be able to cover those, so. Well, good morning. It's come that time of year that we need to. Consider renewing our indigent defense contracts, we'll recall, two years ago, we came and had a discussion about. The indigent defense options that we had here for our constitutional mandate under. Sixth Amendment, United States Constitution regarding. Our obligation to provide indigent individuals with. Competent representation, should they not be able to afford it. I think then I told you that we'd seen a serious downturn, decline in the number of attorneys. Practicing in this area that were willing to take indigent appointments, you used to have a robust will. Of attorneys from Henderson County, Smith County, Hoffman County, some from Hunt County that would come down and service the indigent defense. Clients here, defendants in Van Zant County and that. Ride around the COVID, obviously, as many others took a downturn. We saw that will, that list of attorneys. Decline significantly to the point at one time, we only had one attorney that was willing to take. Appointments, obviously, that's not sufficient for what we need here in Van Zant County, so two years ago. Came to the court and we discussed the different. Options that we would have to fulfill this mandate, talked about. Regional defender programs, we talked about indigent defense contracts. And, and I think at that time I recommended that the indigent defense contract was the most. Affordable and effective that I thought, system that I thought that we could employ here. And I'm reporting today that we've had great success with the indigent defense contracts that we've had for the past two years with. Mr. Richard Schmidt and Mr. Jonathan Manning. And so today, what I'm asking the commissioners for today to do is to. Renew these contracts with these two attorneys that are local attorneys in Van Zant County and, and Canton. Who maintain a principal office here to renew their contract for an additional two year period. The DA's office, Ms. Curry has made multiple statements, comments to me that she is pleased with. The work that Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Manning do and serving the indigent defense population here in Van Zant County. And so there's a good working relationship between the defense and the state, which obviously goes to the betterment of the judicial system and being able to move. Move cases and get people in and out of jail. So I think we provided the contracts to you last week for consideration today. We do see an increase in each contract, obviously, that's going to be reflective of the, the rise of inflation and cost of living. In order to perform these services, and so I believe two years ago, we contracted a hundred thousand. Per year per attorney, and what I'm asking the commissioners for today to do is to approve one hundred and twenty five. Per attorney per year for the next two year period.
And that is still well within our budget, we anticipated this and. When we were in budgeting and, and it's well within our budget.
Yes, sir, it is well within the budget and you are correct, you and I. And I believe Judge Winters had numerous conversations about budgeting for the indigent defense needs, both criminal defense and also for civil. Defense for CPS, AG, mental health, things of that nature, so yes, even with increasing the contracts to, to counter the inflation, rising costs. Services and living here, we are still under budget.
Okay.
We, we don't have enough attorneys that's interested enough to have a wheel, do we?
No, we do not, matter of fact, these two attorneys, despite having the contract for the last two years, we've also had to appoint attorneys. That are not these individuals, anytime there's a conflict, I'll give you a good example, Commissioner Melon, right now, we have, I think, five or six. Young men. Who allegedly committed crime in Grand Celine regarding the school bus that made the news. Those five individuals cannot be represented by two individuals, so we've had to go off the contracts and try to find people to appoint. And oftentimes I'm told, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna represent this person, so I think right now there's. There's two, there's two individuals other than these two attorneys. That will sometimes take appointments for the county, but they're not on the list and they're not required to do it, oftentimes. I'm calling and asking favor saying, I need your, I need your assistance, would you be willing to. Serve in this capacity, but they're not on the list to be able to just take the appointments as I get them. And oftentimes I'll find people that do get on the list, they get off the list pretty quickly. And so we, we've not had. New attorneys move into this. new attorneys move into this county to provide this, these type of services. So whereas I said, years passed when I was in the D A's office. At the beginning, we had a robust list in Henderson County and Smith and Hunt and Van, Kaufman and Simmons Rains. And so we just don't have that anymore. Most of those attorneys are staying home and they're taking retained work and they're not doing work on anything.
We should let the quick little notes, it's an unfunded mandate also. We don't have a choice. We have to pay it.
But I will say too that, and you're exactly right, it is unfunded. Mandate is this constitutional mandate that we have to meet. And if we don't meet it, we're just gonna pay more later through lawsuits and other things. But I would like to report though that the work that these gentlemen are doing and the way that they're doing it, I believe that we are getting more bang for our buck than we have in the past several years. When we did have a list and we were making those appointments. Oftentimes, the budget or the money that we would spend out of our budget would be higher than what we've been paying in the last two years. So we're trying to manage, you know, fifteen to twenty attorneys who are billing hourly or on a flat fee schedule. I think we're getting better services under this indigent defense contract at a lower rate.
And this is a two-year contract.
This is a two-year contract. That was what was requested by the attorneys. I think it's mutually beneficial. We get to lock them in for two years. We know what inflation could do in a year or so. But I think it's beneficial, mutually beneficial for them because they know that they have a contract for the two-year period. Because these, these men will tell you that taking on a contract such as this does fundamentally change their law practice and it prevents them from being able to take on a lot of retained work in other counties or contracts in other counties. And so this has become really a lion's share of, you know, their business that they do. And so for them to take it on is a, is a big decision. And so for them, it's mutually beneficial for them to take it for two years, just as it is for us to lock them in at a rate for two years. And, and also I will mention to the court and remind the court that during the pre-trial release of individuals, I constantly collect the money at the rate of either ten to forty dollars a month for reimbursement to this fee. So oftentimes we're able to recoup some money from individuals. So a lot of times when defendants come in and they plead, if they plead a probation, I'm able to order them to reimburse Vansant County for the cost of their indigent representation. So for example, in the last, the last contract that came out to be based on the number of cases they could take would be about five hundred dollars per, per case. I was able to collect that through most people that were put on probation. Now, if they're sentenced to T D C, the law says that I can't order someone who's deemed indigent under the law to be able to recoup money from them on a judgment. So if they go to prison, they don't, they don't reimburse per law. If they go on probation or they get reduced to something like time served, then they are ordered to pay that and we've collected that through either collections or we've collected that at the time of the plea or we've collected that towards through community supervision. So we try to recoup as much as we can back into the budget to help replenish the money that's coming out of this line.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, is there a motion? We're gonna do two motions. Is there a motion to accept the contract with Jonathan Manning?
Sure move.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Is there a motion to accept the contract with Richard H. Schmidt?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton, second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Milton. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. And Judge Reese, I believe that, I don't know if the contracts were presented to you, but I'll bring those to you.
Yes, they were, they were presented and put in the binder and then we got, I think we got them, the signed copies back, so. We should have, if you want to bring the originals down to us, we'll sign them.
We'll do it. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, item number ten, discuss consider requesting a traffic study on Highway sixty-four for the purpose of justifying the lowering of speed limits in certain areas. This came about when an individual contacted Text Dot and requested that the speed limits be lowered. And Text Dot referred them back to the commissioner's court because only the commissioner's court can request to have a traffic study done on certain, on state highways. And so the, the letter that has been that I have composed says, this is a formal request of the commissioner's court of Vansant County to request Text Dot conduct a traffic study on Highway sixty-four to determine if the speed limits can be reduced from the current seventy mile per hour speed limit. There are two particular areas of Highway sixty-four that we are requesting a traffic study conducted. The first is between County Road forty-one oh three and Highway two forty-three. And that is coming into town, that's where you start, just a little bit past, going, going east, a little bit past the roadside park, where the hills are. Once the hills start, that's, it's seventy miles an hour all the way up to just before the east annex of our, and so we're asking them to do a traffic study on that. And then the second place is, and we've discussed this with them before, is between Dodson Street, which is where the city limit sign is for Canton, City of Canton, and Interstate twenty. The traffic study was done in two thousand nineteen on that location, that stretch of road, and it was determined that there wasn't, it didn't justify lowering the speed limit. Okay, since two thousand nineteen, we have all of those retail businesses that have been opened along nineteen, I'm sorry, along sixty-four. And so we're asking them to do another study on that to determine if it can be lowered to sixty or sixty-five. So that's the letter that we want to send. Is there?
Sure move.
Second. All right, motion made, second. Any further discussion?
Ronnie, did you understand? We have to request that the state does it and they don't charge us. So, but the court has to make the request.
We're not doing the traffic study.
We're not, we're not doing, Vansant County's not doing.
You said.
No, we don't. It's not, it's not, it's not a question and answer period. We're just responding to your earlier question, okay? So any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. All right, I will send that out. Item number eleven, discuss consider over forty-five day travel reimbursement for justice of the peace for Scott Shin. This, this was actually submitted forty-two days after the expense was incurred and it didn't quite make it to the treasurer's department on time. And then he didn't realize it and didn't realize until, until recently that it hasn't been paid. So he's asking that we go ahead and pay it. It was actually submitted, but it didn't make it in time. So, and the amount is a hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-one cents for mileage that the that Judge Shin used in his work in October of twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to accept? Okay, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Thank, motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss consider approving agreement with Trilam Roofing for courthouse repair. The pictures that I sent and we've been working with Steve Shad on this and, and the reason why we know that there is an issue that developed is because Garland Roofing, which is Steve Shad's, the company that Steve Shad works for, put on the roof in two thousand twenty-two and it's got a forty-year warranty on it. So consequently, they come out on a regular basis and inspect the roof and they discovered that there was one section that water was seeping in underneath the, the layers of the roof that they put on. And the reason the water was seeping under there is because of the stone, the coping stone, that's the stones on the very top of the, of the courthouse that the mortar joints are coming out and the water is seeping down through the mortar joints underneath, down into the wall and underneath the roof. And that's, that's what you see on, on the first pictures, the mortar joints. That is what we are looking into repair. That was not part of the scope of the roof repair in twenty twenty-two. And what you will see on the page two is this is the corner where the water was seeping in underneath the roof and because of that, and they have gone in and pulled it out and they have extracted the water and they resealed it. And, but it will continue to have water underneath there and that was all at no charge. They didn't charge us. It's all part of the warranty. But if we, if it continues, then we'll still have water underneath there and that will potentially affect the warranty. And so what they have done is they've, they've contacted Trilam Roofing, which is the people who put the roof on and to come in and put, to dig out some of that mortar and replace it on the coping stones on the very top. This is, this is, if anybody have heard about my, my presentation about restoring the courthouse, this, this is like a stopgap measure until we have the opportunity to do some a complete restoration, or it may not even need to be done after we have this repaired done. But they will, they will sand out the mortar and they will put in a new sealant that will prevent water from going down behind the stonework and, and getting underneath the roof. So.
And they checked the whole, all the way around? I just saw that one, that one one?
That's the only place where it's actually leaking, yes, but there is, there is. You can look, you can tell where it's leaking just by looking on the outside of the building and where the stone has popped out. That, that has got but it's, anyway, the contract is, is in there. The cost is twenty-three thousand dollars to replace the mortar on the top and that would be an excellent repair to keep the water from going in underneath the roof, our new roof.
Would just be a separate warranty then on the work they do?
A separate warranty.
Yeah, but they're gonna do the scope cops twenty-three thousand.
Correct.
So are they gonna warranty the work they do?
Yes. Yes, Trilam, I don't know what the length of the warranty. I don't know that it'd be forty years, but.
Two-year documentation here you got.
Two-year contractor warranty. What it says. So, but Javier is the name of the gentleman who's done the work and he is, is very responsive and very detailed in getting the job done correctly. And I have complete confidence in what they do in our regards. So. Is there a motion to approve the agreement with Trilam Roofing for repair? We have this money in, in the budget under the public buildings as part of the building repairs. Is there a motion to accept this contract or to sign this contract? Our motion. All right.
Gotta be done.
A second.
All right, further discussion?
Yes, Ronnie, back to your comment. This really has nothing to do with the roof. This is the top of the walls that are now leaking and going under the roof. And it has nothing to do with the work we've done before. So in my little small brain up there, it should have been just put on the agenda to, to seal the top of the walls. So that's, I just wanted to explain that to you.
And, and also the flashing, which is the sides of the walls. The roof was put on and it goes up about two foot, two to three foot on walls that go up six foot. And there's a flashing between the two or three foot up to the top of the wall that was not, also not part of the roof repair, scope of the roof repair. And those flashings at some point in time will need to be replaced. And that's what I want, that's why I want to get included in the courthouse restoration grant to, to have done is those parts, but they're not critical at this point in time.
So he's gonna, he's gonna fix this like he said, seal it. Are we gonna seal the whole the whole roof or we're just fixing where it's leaking?
No, this is just to replace the mortar. That's to seal the mortar on the top stones.
But all the way around.
All the way around.
All the way around. Okay, because that was twenty-three thousand dollars replaced.
Not before.
All the way around. All around town, yeah.
They don't will flood.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and saying, all those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies that are in the court room. Were your consideration.
No, it's all.
Yes. Can you go get me the Text Dot letter?
Yes.
Can you get me one? Just print out a copy if you need of the, actually, I can maybe I'll do it from here. So we can sign it while we're all here.
Probably the same we did.
Plus Kenny, do you have your? It's right there. You've always got it. That is page one forty-nine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Not the walls, the joint.
As you have it.
There you go. I'm gonna get to the letter.
Not Gigan, not Gigan, I'm sorry. We need that one that Sandy put in there on those bids. We need to sign it.
Doesn't mean we can still get some of that or?
Oh, yes.
I'm sure.
And we're good, we can go over fifty thousand ahead. What's it rock like? I mean, is it just smaller or?
No, it's harder. It's harder. It's, it's a, it's a state, state testing, what they use on state rubber. It won't, it won't turn out as quick as a commercial backed down.
I thought there was a marijuana that was over. It's still available?
Yeah, well, it's, it's only good through March, through May. We're bidding the next year. We're bidding state.
So I guess we just go to a regular person there to.
No.
Arcosa.
Yes, sir, today. Oh, I'm sorry. One more to fill it, getting on those bids.
So you had to go back to Rockland's previous state now?
Yes, if it's available, yes.
Do all sets sign? Oh, Kenny's already gotten the signatures for the financial report. Yeah, he's already done that. All right, we're done.
That's it?
That's it. I don't think else. Oh, Chad is inside. It's just that one. And there's the third one. It's just that one.